All right, I'm starting the August 6th meeting of the Finance Facilities Committee. Five o'clock, it's actually 5:02 right now. We have a full complement. First order of business is to review the July 2nd meeting minutes.
Wow.
It's August already. Anybody have any comments on those?
Dean, can we ask questions about them?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Like, in the minutes, it said we are expecting $35,000 from credit from Crec. Did we get that?
Yeah, Ray, do you know if we got that 35,000?
I believe we did. You should see a big difference. A lot of credits have been applied. I mean, so many that they're very numerous. So, I mean, there's a lot of adjustments, not adjustments, credits, encumbrance clearing. There's been a lot of action and you'll see that as a result of the financial numbers when we get to it. So, there's been a big change there. We've been very busy.
But do you know if we got the, you think we did get the 35,000?
I'm about 99% positive we received that.
Okay. And did we get the OpS for $225,000 yet?
I believe that was just approved. I'd have to go back and look at the actual grants. Hang on here, I can. These are unexpected questions. Sorry about that. Bear with me one second. Just saw an email regarding that today, so I'm pretty sure we received that too. Grants. I'm gonna, I'll tell you what, let's keep moving and I'll take a look. I know we received something on it.
Yeah, that could, yeah, that could fall into Director of Finance report too.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I make a motion to approve the minutes of July 2nd. Did we do that already?
Yeah, no, we haven't done that yet. Go ahead a second. All right. Moved in second that we approved the July 2nd meeting minutes. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extinctions. Motion carries unanimously. Next order of business, the, any updates on the 23, 24 audit?
The audit actually is, we're in the middle of it right now. I'm meeting next Thursday with the auditors to review our upcoming, the plan for it. We've sent them some of their requests already. Tomorrow, I'll be sending off most of the procedures and processes that they had us review. There's one I have questions on, so before I send that back, I'm gonna talk to Steven, one of our lead auditors on that. But other than that, it's moving along, so we should be in good shape. The plan is to somewhere between 10:1 and 11:1 finalize everything, so it'll get everybody back on schedule. That's, that's our goal and our plan.
All right. Uh, any questions for Ray on that?
I think there's been a good collaboration, Ray, would you say, with these guys now that you're on board?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I mean, we're trying to, I mean, again, I look at an audit as a way that we can, we can institute improvement throughout the program. So, if they find something, I, I don't really worry about it. I take the next step to make those improvements.
Well, I know you're meeting with the team on a regular basis to like really make sure that we capture what's been going on and fine tuning it and making sure we're cross-training everybody.
Yes, yeah, so, and we're on target with a lot of that, so we're doing good.
Is there anything we should be concerned about now, Ray, or do you think it's going to be smooth sailing?
I'm always optimistic.
Than last year.
I'm always optimistic, so unless they find something I'm not aware of, I, I would expect smooth sailing. There's nothing, nothing out of the ordinary yet, let's put it that way. Unless they pull a rabbit out of their hat, I have no rabbits left, so.
You have a federal permit for exhibiting that rabbit?
Yes. License, that's it.
Well, at least we're on the right track and the deadline is between October 1st and November 1st. So, there won't be any, oh, the board was late with their audit and blah, blah, blah.
They've already returned some of the preliminary data that they've asked for, so that they can do additional selections and things like that, so. We're on the right path.
Yeah, thank you, Ray.
Jen, any questions for Ray on that score? You're muted, Jen, so you know. Jen, you're muted. I don't want you to mute me.
Sorry, Ray, I think we're in a good start because you already gave them information and then you're working on like some of the controls that they identified in the last audit, so optimistic. Hopefully, this will be clean.
It will be.
Yeah.
I exude a little confidence, it will be, we should be okay.
Isn't it funny, you can exude a little confidence and that sounds positive, but when you leave out the indirect article, it's the opposite. All right, any other questions regarding the audit? All right, hearing none. Next, progress on the Business Manager position. Raise replacements, sad to say.
So, we are on our way. We have a committee and we have round one and round two. Lori is setting that all up. We do actually, this time around, for some reason, we did get some real viable candidates and Ray has offered to help with the transition, once that happens. So, I am bound and determined to get both that position and my Assistant Superintendent position, you know, completed for the start of the school year. Don't know if they'll be in the seat by then, but at least we'll hopefully have this election. And I think we have board members invited to both of those, so you know, I'm hopeful that they look good on paper, so we just have to meet them.
How many, how many applicants do you have, Susan?
I don't want to say a false number, but I feel like it was up from what we had had, like six or seven, but so, but they've had experienced CPAs and that kind of thing. I just can't say too much because we're in the middle of the process, but
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful.
Well, let's make sure we get the right person.
We do have to make sure that. That's why I'm appreciative of all those who are helping out with the interview process.
It's a good idea. There's room for prayer.
It's really, it's really a difficult market, I have to say. There's not a lot of educational finance directors out there. So, we were lucky to get Ray and, you know, hopefully he can help us with the training, some of the training, so.
I did have somebody ask me, hey, you got an opening. I said, yeah, gotta be a CPA. Oh, okay.
Actually, to get your O85, you really don't need to be a CPA.
Really?
You need six years minimum experience in five of six specific areas. I can send you that if you like.
Interesting, but I wonder what the population looks like? Who would have that sort of experience but not happen to have a CPA?
Like, somebody like myself. I'm not a CPA, but I've got, I've got many years accounting background, along with supply chain background, software background. I mean, I've been, I, if I, somebody like myself, I, I've been around the horn, let's put it that way.
Right. Yeah, it's, I remember there, way back when I was an engineer, there were some, delicately, but there were some people from the before time would never been to engineering school, but had spent so much time, for example, in Persia doing waterworks during World War II, that they did, they could, they could, they're in engineering school all by themselves. They had PEs, but when they, you could get that.
Believe it or not.
What's that?
Believe it or not, I'm one credit shy of an associate's degree in manufacturing engineering as well.
No kidding.
That's not on my resume.
There you go, after you're done with this stint, take that one last class.
I transferred to business after, when I was when, when I was in, I'll give you a quick, short story. When I was in Waterbury State Tech, working on my associates, they had us set up a lathe and one of my partners in there left, left the wrench, the tightening wrench, in the lathe and turned it on and it got embedded in the wall. That was it. That was my last class. I transferred to business school.
Anything's flying, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, that's the real world out there. Anyway, so anything else on the Business Manager position?
Hear anything now? I'm not sure.
What, sorry, Jen.
I'm sorry, Jen.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure, Dean, like if you're speaking or Susan, I was like, oh, I can't hear anything now.
Yeah, no, sometimes things move, but nothing's happening. It's like a marionette. There's just nothing really behind it. So, anything else, Jen, Bev, on this one? Okay.
No.
Nope.
No, just keep us updated on where you are with the interviews. Is, is Jen, are you part of the interview? Are you on that team?
I am. I believe it's Tuesday and Wednesday. I believe. I need to check my calendar more so.
Okay.
But it's next week sometime.
I appreciate you being there. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's important work, you know. That's one of the most important jobs in this industry.
I love it. The next item that I have on the agenda is call is for Treehouse Finances. What I understand though is that while we may have numbers, and Ray, I think you gave us, you gave us a layout of where we are. I'm given to believe that a discussion of this may be premature until we have more information.
Yes, I, I've received some of the updates in terms of the rates and things like that for the upcoming year, but I've got the, I just, right before we logged on, I just received some of the students, but it's not the full enrollment that we need for, for September to calculate projected revenue and things like that.
Right.
I, I think probably the first or second meeting in, in September would probably be, be a better time to review the Treehouse projections.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
I can just say that the director, we have a new director, he's been there a year, and he's very enthusiastic and it's much healthier than it has been in the past. And I know that with Treehouse longstanding as an enterprise fund, they do recycle and they do purchase some things for the program and oftentimes even iPads have been purchased at the school level for the kids in Treehouse, but also can be used in the library, let's say during the school day. So, we're talking about different things that we can do that can help both the school system and our kids who are in Treehouse after school.
Yeah, I mean, I personally am, you know, I can think of things I would like to ask, then I, we, again, I have to be aware that we don't have everything in front of us and so.
Right, exactly.
I want to create a picture that's maybe pretty, but not true.
Comprehensive.
Is that the, the information that we received in our online, well, through email, was that the information for Treehouse for last year or is that a projection for next year?
That, that was last year.
That was last year.
That was last year. Now, I just, right before I left the office, I did receive, I did drop in some of the new numbers into a spreadsheet, but I don't have all the, all the enrollment numbers yet, so we're, it's a, it's a moving target right now until we, till we finalize it, at least get a better feel of what the projections look like for the fall.
I just feel we're in a much healthier position than we have been in the past.
I think so.
Yeah, I've got some, I personally have some qualitative questions that I, I don't want to ask right now.
Yep.
I don't, I don't know enough, but all right.
What, what schools have Treehouse in it, Susan?
All of them.
All of them, okay.
All of them. Some have larger numbers, like Charles Barnings, our smallest school, so they have the smallest number and they also have so many military children and a lot of those children go to the Navy after school and before school care and get, you know, transportation over to us. But the summer program is very robust. It's at Katherine Kolnawski and it services all of our students. And it's really a great thing for our families. We learned early on that one of the draw for the inter-district magnets was the before and after care across the bridge. And so, that's when we instituted and kind of really grew this program. And so, there was enough interest that every single school could have before and after care and then on TLI days or on April break or in the summertime, families would have really quality care. And through COVID, I don't know what we would have done without this program because those every other days, they were, they were there, you know, helping our kids get the work done. So, it was really fabulous.
Is there certain numbers of kids that you can have in the program?
They have to go by the guidelines from the state with early childhood and, you know, aftercare, so they have a ratio, I think it's one to 10, something like that. For adult, you know, for adult to student.
Okay.
So, we'll have a fuller discussion in September on this one. All right, just plain old Director of Finance report.
Old, is that a?
Plain old.
It's a good word, okay. Aged. Okay, within, within your packet, I did send off a narrative. Again, we're, we're working through utilities, by the way, we took a good look at that. And it looks like the budget was for that, those particular lines were reduced somewhat. That's why we're, we're seeing a huge deficit in there. They were reduced because of a budgets of what was approved of the budget last year.
Yeah, it's not that we spent more, we spent about, I mean, in rough terms, about what we spent the year before, but it looks worse than it is.
Right.
Yes, so the nice thing about this year's budget, we did, we do have a little savings on fuel oil and, and diesel. The bad thing is, I believe at the end of December, our contract runs out with Constellation. So, you're gonna jump from seven and a half to probably 10 to 12 cents a kilowatt hour. On top of that, you have the new, oh God, everybody should be sticking in their electric bill very shortly.
Oh, I already got it in my mail.
Yeah, you should see a big jump in, in one segment that's gonna cause some increases of 25, 50, $100 per, per utility bill from the state. It was, for when COVID was around, that they didn't, they allowed people not to pay. Now, now you're paying. They're making up the, they're making up the difference, so that's my concern. With any luck, you won't have me here to cry on your shoulder, so, but you will, you, it's not, I, I'm recommending we look for, for something soon. I know.
Don't we work with the town though, Ray? Right, right. So, we'll work in collaborative so that we can get the most out of the deal.
Yeah, we're, we're hooked at the hip on that, so.
Yeah.
And I'm sure John in the town is probably looking at it already.
Right, right.
But I just wanted to throw that out there. If you noticed, on the financial report, we're down to 242,739 dollars in, in the, as a negative balance. I think it's gonna come down about another 40,000 conservatively, possibly more. But I'm not gonna be running new reports because we're, we're working on some vendors to try to clean up a few other items that I don't think we're gonna, that don't, that don't apply. So, there's a little more work to do on this, but we're getting down now to the nitty gritty in terms of that.
And we do still have a lot of encumbrances that we don't know will come through, including one less healthcare. So, if we have to use the reserve, we'll, you know, have to do that, but interestingly, this number is very close to the property damages, the net value between paying for the liability and getting some receipts back and not getting, you know, the cyber attack alone was $85,000 and you had to get up to 100,000 to get anything back. So, but that number's 261.5, so look how close. And we've been saying that from the beginning of the year, this property damage is one of the things that we could not forecast, along with some other things, but that was for sure, something that we've had to take care of, all of those different, you know, as you know. So, it's interesting to me, but I'm hopeful that we can be in the black.
Yeah, I'm keeping my fingers crossed. We're trying. Uh, what else have I got here within the narrative? Within your packet, there's a three-page review on, on mine are on two sides. This is a, it's a direct pivot table. It's a pivot table of a direct export out of E-Finance. Bottom line shows the same, but what I'm trying to say is it's a little longer than what you're used to, much more detailed than what you're used to for a financial report. I am gonna try to tweak it one more time for some additional consolidation based on salaries and things like that, so, but I just want to, but you know, I, I didn't forget about the workload on this, so we're, we're trying to see if I can come up with something better and easier. I'm not sure it's gonna be better, but it's going to be easier to extract, let's put it that way. This offers much more detail. I think you were looking for detail. How much detail? Get me some feedback. It's for your, for you to give me feedback if you can, okay?
I think we should also bring it to the COW and I know we have the ad hoc team working on it as well.
Okay.
The only question I have, Ray, like you have 102, 103 teacher salaries and then you have 125 teacher salaries. How do we, how do I know, you know, is it special ed teachers, regular ed teachers?
You're not gonna know. What it is, it's the object code representing salaries for each of the segments that are related to those object codes. So, these are all, these are, in other words, you've, you've got, even in your, the object code I presented, they're consolidated from 101 through 109. And then you've, you've got 123 through 127. They're all consolidated within that lump. These are more of a breakdown of those, or I'm gonna call them org codes or specialty codes that they, that they relate to. I, I don't want to be so transparent that I give away the ob, who's relate, the individuals that are related to that object code. You need, I need to be careful there, okay? So, I just, in other words, I don't want, there's a one liner and it's $100,000. I can't have people guessing that somebody makes $100,000 that, that does that job, you know, you know what I mean? Behind, it's, it's, it's not fair to them at this point, although it is public knowledge, contracts normally posted, so, but I'm, I'm trying to be, give you much more, this has much more detail than the other, the other report. The other report, all of those salaries are lumped.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, but it doesn't, I don't know. I, I don't know anything, I know they're just salaries, so you could lump them all together if you ask me because they're just salaries. I don't know if they're special ed teacher salaries, regular ed teacher salaries, I mean, substitute teachers, maybe that's a different line, I don't see it.
Yeah, that would be a different category, yeah.
Okay, but even administration, you have admin, 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 but is it high, high school admin, central office admin? It doesn't tell me much.
Let me, let me play with the report. I mean, give me some feedback. If, if you want to see, I can, let me see what I can do, okay? Because these are simple pivot tables and it's copied out of a pivot table and placed in here. Otherwise, it's, this is what, three pages of about 25, 30 lines a page, two and a half pages roughly, so the other report was 800 lines and I don't, I don't think you want to look at 800 lines.
I have to say that last year, because we had so many new board members, we really brought it out to them at the school level, at the central office level, at the special ed and you were really able to see them better. You know, the staffing that went with each school, that went with each, you know, with the central office, with special ed. So, I know people felt it was a laborious process, but it did give you some insight to what it takes to run our schools. And we even talked about doing that to the level of using utilities and see how they run, along with staffing, supplies and everything else that it takes to run a school. So, I still think there's some merit in all of that for the board, but I'm just putting it out there.
At, at budget time, I totally agree, because I've been before boards where we went through the org code slash object code of every single body, every single supply. You name it, we went through it. And we should, we justify, we either justified or we couldn't justify why, why we were spending it. So, and then it was up to the board to make decisions, you know, we approve your budget, we'd like to tweak it, we'd like, you know what I mean? You go through it top to bottom. That, that is a long, laborious process. We, I've had, that was when I was with Vernon, it was a very detailed process. It's, it's very transparent. I mean, not that we're trying to hide anything, but it is transparent. These are, these are normally done in subcommittee, such as this, your budgets. You're normally, again, I'm not, I'm being an interim, I'm used to the finance subcommittee reviewing the detail. We would have many, many meetings as the finance subcommittee. I don't know if you have a budget subcommittee on top of this, but normally it would be your, your committee that would be doing that detail.
Yeah, no, typically the, the board itself.
Okay.
The board itself.
Does it together, we always.
Okay.
Because there are nine of us and so we just meet more often, but we don't get into the, you know, every single line. I'm reminded now, the town that I'm in here in Massachusetts, I ran across a publication, it was part of the town, you know, budget documents. It had a list of everybody by name who worked for the town and what they made.
Oh, wow.
There's no secret whatsoever, what everybody from the, you know, the front desk person on up to the, you know, the stipend for the first selectman, they all got, it was all there.
Technically, it's a public document. I mean, you work for a public facility. My last two positions, my salary, my, my entire business office, the admin team, they were all public, all your contracts are published now.
Yeah, I mean, we can guess. I mean, if you look at, for example, the, you know, public safety portion of the town's budget, you see so many patrol officers. Well, I don't have to know exactly who they are, but I can figure out. If you say I've got, you know, 100 patrol officers and here's a lump sum for the salaries, I know how much they make on average.
Right, yeah, that's it.
You know, do I know how much an individual patrol officer makes in the ballpark?
Yeah, you're, you're in range, yeah.
Yeah, and yeah, when you get to the higher up, I mean, people can figure out, if you break it out enough, who the, what the directors are making.
Right.
What the principals are making. Yeah, I guess if you work for the town, you work for the schools, then you're, there's some scrutiny there that you might not get in the private sector.
Right.
Unless you're a CEO, in which case that's splattered all over the but at that level, then what do they care?
It doesn't matter when you make.
Yeah, I make 50 million a year, what's, you know, what are you gonna do about it?
What's your name? Bill Gates, okay.
Well, all right, I think I'm trying to fill in time because we don't have a lot to talk about here.
I know, and I don't even know, I emailed Sam, I know Joyce reached out, but he had been on vacation. And I, I just know that when, you know, he took his week off, they were continuing to do the work. We still have camps in the schools and summer school, and so the whole team kinda comes together at the end of the year. Or at the end of the summer to make sure that the schools are bright and shiny and all taken care of, but some will take, like the rec camps at Thames and at Mystic River, take a little more time to clean up and get ready.
And I'm gonna basically jump to one last thing. I did speak with the Trumbull School Administration. Um, I, I think Jay wanted me to touch base on this. Um, on the, um, operational review that they had had. It's my assumption that the town would like us to do an op, operational review. It did come in, come in with, uh, I'm gonna call it mixed reviews at this time. Um, some of the things that, uh, they've completed all the processes there, by the way, and they've also implemented or modified their internal processes. I know this because I'm good friends with the Director of Finance there. Um, and I also am a personal, I'm the guy that hired Marty Semmel when he first left the principalship. And I gave him his first job as a superintendent when I was a board chair, so I know them both very well. Um, long story short, um, some of the things that they were not happy with is the, I'm gonna be somewhat kind here, the outdated processes that they, they wanted the board to, the, uh, business office to implement. So that's the one drawback. Some of these auditors, and I'll give you a good example. I'm, I've got a question with, uh, Steve in our auditor. One of the problems they had was sign-offs of requisitions within our system. Uh, the people aren't, the, the, there's no, no initials on the requisition. There doesn't have to be an initial or a signature on a requisition. It's a request to buy something. I digitally approved it within the system, or that, or Susan, or whoever has those rights within the workflow. The workflow puts a stamp on it that says it was approved by person X Y Z. Why do I need them to do duplicate work to sign it again, to approve it again?
I mean, physically sign it.
Yeah, like it's a little outdated.
Right, so, the things like that is where they, they ran into issues and it's, not all of the, um, not all of these recommendations are what they should be. Let's put it that way. And so, um, and I'm not gonna throw gasoline on a fire there, because that was that town, this is, and this is Groton, so. Uh, but if I were the business manager, not that I'm not, I would, I would recommend kicking the can down the road at this point. Hire your new person, let them make whatever changes are necessary. And then a year or two down the road, if you still think you need to go down that path, then open Pandora's box. But right now, I wouldn't go there. That's my personal opinion.
Well, I think also you've done a lot of legwork, Ray, that you can, um, transition the new person. Because just even tightening up the procedures and having people cross-trained, it's something that's been a goal in this district since I've gotten here.
So we're, we're working on that cross-training. Uh, we're putting in what I term input-output controls. Um, so if, if we, and I'm a, I'm a stickler when it comes to certain things. So if we don't follow certain process, and we have to look back and say, okay, we're gonna do it again, that gets under my skin. I don't like doing things twice. I wanna do it right the first time. So, matter of fact, Susan probably can see me sometimes frustrated because we're doing it two times or three times, and it, it's like, we're not gonna do it that way. Like, you can hear my Great Pyrenees in the other room. So, he doesn't, I don't know, he probably sees a squirrel outside, and I apologize.
That's all right. They have a voice too.
Yeah, very loud voice. But, um, my, my recommendations at this point, and I'm not trying to rebuff the town on what they see or they, they deem necessary. But to have somebody new come on board and throw this at them, I don't think it's smart. I mean, that's, that's my own opinion, but.
Yeah, I've, I've gotta say that, uh, and I'll just put it right here, there's no reason, because of your status, there's no reason for you to be um, covering your tail on this one.
Right.
You'd be accused of hiding anything. You just got here. So this is a recommendation from the outside. And on its own, never mind any possible motivation you may have, uh, on its own, it seems to make sense. As desirable as reviews, uh, and, and, and all this appear to be, I get what you're saying, which is, imagine somebody coming in having to get control of an organization and then being told from, by somebody on the outside, here's some more recommendations. Let the, let the guy get, or guy or gal, either one, I don't know. Get, let them get settled in before we, you know, and then let their, let, then let their department there, when it becomes their department, let that be.
You, you hit the nail on the head.
Cause I, I presume that they have some capacity to come in and say, oh, that's not how it ought to be done. Now, if, if we hire somebody, I'm not saying we are, but should we hire somebody who looks good on paper? Interviews well, and turns out to be a well-meaning, hapless person, that means whatever problems we have will carry forward. And yeah, I suppose two years from now, we'll wish that we had done a review two years before, but, um, you know, it's kind of like when you break up with somebody and you tell yourself, well, the next girlfriend I get, you make a checklist of all, all the requirements of the next girlfriend.
One and done.
Way to start off.
One and done, he says.
Hey, hey, Susan, we'll say the next boyfriend.
Yeah. I don't have time for that.
No, not in our jobs, no.
I don't have time for you.
Well, basically, I'm wrapping up my report with that, Dean.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions.
Ben, Jen, any questions? See, you can go in anywhere you want, ladies. Jen.
No, I think I'm all set.
Okay.
The only, in regards to the report, the only question I have is, um, on, an update regarding like funding requests from the town. If anything.
Oh, I think that there is a meeting scheduled this week. Um, I continue to reach out to my contacts at the state and national level. I have a conversation with the Secretary of Education tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
So I continue to use my networking and all those that I know. And looking at the law, the law is really crystal clear. We just want a statement from them, so.
Are you talking about the, uh, the excess cost, or the excess, uh?
Revenue. Yeah.
Yeah, to offset possibly if we can't get that, um, amount down to zero.
I don't think that's gonna be a problem now. I think we gotta look forward at the nurses and what's happening for next year. I'm really feeling very confident. I'm so appreciative of Ray and his team and my administrative team that really, when I asked them to tighten up and not spend and see if they can get away with half, they did it and.
They did a good job. I, I.
They really did a good job. I have to tell you, I sing their praises because we worked as a team with the board and the staff and, um, and I didn't know that we could do this, but I'm very hopeful. I'm really excited. This is like my big goal for the year. Like, let's get through this, guys.
Four more weeks before the fiscal year-end shuts down.
I know, but you've got a lot encumbered, Ray. You've done that for us too, and I so appreciate it. I know you sent the number to John Burke too today when I sent it to the board, and he seemed really pleased as well. So, we're in this together.
We got a job well done.
Yeah.
John Burke today, so.
Yeah.
Okay, and tomorrow, Susan Floyd meets with the town attorney.
I think so, yes.
I think so.
I gave him some more talking points that I had received from a colleague, so. Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll see how that works out.
We see how it works.
Yeah, and now with the legal, um, definition of L E A, I mean, it's crystal clear.
It is so crystal clear. And, and, you know, it's really important that the federal funds do come to the L E A.
Right.
And I, they have come through when they budget for it, you know, but when it comes in more, then that's what we're just looking for. We're not looking for going back to ground zero.
So on the school nurses, is it fair to say that the new practice is going to be that we're, let's say, our twenty-five, twenty-six budget?
I think it's.
Nurses, what's that?
I think it's been put in our lap, yeah.
Yes.
Right now. Yeah, I will tell you this much, in your twenty-four, twenty-five budget, there is nothing in the budget that, that David left me for school nurses. So the budget, and I, I will be printing that, uh, pulling that for the next round.
Yeah.
Uh, but you will see, there is no salary.
Well, that was the timing of the thing, and, um, we were told it was in the town's budget at the time.
It was always in the town's budget. We've never had that in there, and one of the reasons for, and I can remember from when I was on the council, was the less that was in the Board of Ed budget, the better for M B R purposes. And if the nurse, you know, raise your hand if you wanted to slide something from the town end of the budget into the Board of Ed. No, we wanna take things out if we can.
Yeah.
But the fact that the nurses were out, it's like, let's.
Right, because of the M B R, right?
Yeah, it's, um, bad on, like, how that all happened. To this day.
I just wanna move forward. And get the job done.
Right, right.
That's, you know, we've, in all earnestness, worked through this budget that has been, you know, three budgets, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, all at the same time. It's a good thing you've got a superintendent who really loves math and was a math major.
Right, and it all happened because the V N A said they're not doing school nurses anymore. So the town didn't just do it. The V N A said, we're not doing it anymore.
Yeah, and, right, that's true, but the way it was slid over, cause you, you heard me in one of our meetings, I said, oh yeah, no, it's in the town budget and they're gonna give it to us. And then come to find out, they weren't, so that was.
But Jen, Jen, they, the, the, I don't wanna rehash this, but the town council did give it to us. Their, their original cut was four point five percent increase, that's what they gave us. Then they added in money for the town nurses and for the school nurses, and that's how we got six percent. It's all, you'll see it in black and white, it's right there.
They can't tell us how to spend.
They can't tell you.
We're gonna have to agree to disagree on this because they can't tell us.
I know they can't tell us what to spend, but that was their intent for us to take that increase and use it for school nurses.
They didn't give us an increase. They didn't give us an increase. The R T M gave us an increase. If it were up to them, we would have been like zero.
All right.
Well, I don't wanna go backwards. I wanna.
Yeah, I don't wanna argue with that.
Through a storm, and I'm gonna get us to the end.
Sticks in my frog too, but we're spinning, that's all we're doing.
Right.
I know.
We gotta move forward, we gotta.
We got it, yeah, let's get this job done. We're, we're doing a good job.
And we're wiping things under the table. Yes, let's go forward.
As we go.
High road, gang.
Well, listen, Ray, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ray.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we'll let you get back to your, uh, Great Pyrenees and your grand. Do they, do the kids, grandkids ride the Great Pyrenees at all?
That's about, he's, he's about a hundred and five pounds now. A little, about eighteen months ago, we picked him up as a, he was a, a rescue.
They're the best.
Uh, he's just, I walked in the house tonight, uh, right before the meeting, I couldn't get away from him, all he did was stubble against me.
It's a big cuddle.
Yeah.
It's a bear hug.
All right, if, if, uh, we, we don't have any further needed, Ray, for tonight, then, uh.
Send me packing?
Yeah.
Again, if you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call.
All right.
Okay.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
You too.
Director of Buildings and Grounds Report. I know Sam's not here, but.
He's on vacation. I think the only thing I can say is we still have the special education camp at N E A, we have the, um, town, um, rec camp at Mystic River, and we have the Thames, um, city camp happening. I think Charles Barnham is empty now, and they're doing their planning. Um, high school might have a couple more kids finishing up. Um, and I think I sent a report, I can't remember, did I send you the summer school report from, um, the high school? Do you remember? I can add it to this week, cause I'm gonna go back to board notes.
Okay.
Um, so, and then the middle school is clear too, so, you know, they're probably cleaning those buildings that are emptied, so that when the other ones get emptied, everybody goes over, it's all hands on deck, you know? And they all work together to get it all spruced up.
So, um, a couple of things, the gym floors that were being worked on, are those finished?
I don't know if they're finished or not.
Okay.
Um, I know that was the project they were working on.
And the playgrounds and the wood chips, is that all been?
Yeah, I, I'm sure that they were marching along. I mean, it is beginning of August, they have a couple more weeks, but they should probably be close to the finish line here.
All right, I mean, I realize you rely on Sam for most of the information, but.
Yeah. Susan, in your board notes, um, can you tell us about the op, so the two hundred and twenty-five thousand and how you intend to spend it?
Yes, I didn't send you that. I thought I sent you the grant, with it all filled in, but I'll send it again. Our bester grant and how we're spending it.
Yeah, cause they say you have to spend it by September, so.
We're able to use a consulting firm that takes our tutors and puts them employed, so we can keep them through the end of January, so we're looking at literacy and trying to get back some of our tutors that way, and then I have other grants that I'm looking specifically for tutors. So, um, that's one of the things in our bester, but I will get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, I pretty much exhausted our agenda.
Yes, it has.
Under an hour.
Well, I thank you.
Yeah.
We can go to dinner with my wife.
How about that?
All right.
All right, if, if there's nothing else we wanna, anything else we wanna talk about, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Did they leave us?
No, 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 they're still here.
I'm sorry, my grandson spoke to me. I have, I make a motion to adjourn.
I think Jen seconded, I'll take that as a second. Even though you're muted. Un, unmute.
Okay, second.
Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
That's two, two to zero to one abstention. Nevermind, I'm just kidding, it's three to one, okay.
Bye, everybody. I have my next meeting now.
All right, good night, ladies.
Bye.